Making that change to this publication.
For this R three, X three. Said they're gonna use glue, duct tape, hot glue, tying and knotting. I'd rather have a classic. I have a sewing machine. Get better. But I have an embroidery machine too.
So you can't be telling me stuff like this. Have not.
I used to do a little stuff all the time. I didn't get busy. I can't find the time to do stuff like this.
I wish I did though. Well, I probably could figure it out, but I've never tried.
With a sewing machine, I never really, until I got an embroidery machine, I was having trouble with a sewing machine. But once I bought a new embroidery machine, I'm like, okay, now I'll use a sewing machine. It was almost the same concept. I feed her from the bottom to the top and so she kind of sticks together. I couldn't get that concept at first, but now I can.
I leave that to y'all. I'll just tell y'all what I want.
And now a button or something pop up or something.
See, I need to bring some of my rolls to you there so my busses don't stay on.
Good eve- what's that? Can you hear me? Yes, okay, good evening, everyone. And... Welcome to the May ninth-
Reporting in progress.
The June second city council meeting. We will begin with public comments on agenda items. We have Mr. Finley, who is here to speak on agenda items. And you will have three minutes, Mr. Finley, to speak on items six, four, and five. Because you can't come up twice. You have one time, so you'll have three minutes. Okay? Okay. Yeah, we can hear you. Yep.
I am in a unique position because I get a lot of mail from code enforcement department. Now, members of the council that were here last year will remember that I had evidence that Patrick Lockett-
Is he here?
Is he here?
Sir, Mr. Finley, you can go ahead and just address us.
Okay, all right, well-
Thank you.
Mr. Patrick Lockett has been committing perjury. And I have evidence of perjury committed this year, Mrs. Flowers, under Mayor Flowers, under your office. Now, I have here one notice that I opened. I have seven notices, I've gotten seven notices this year so far. I opened one of them that there's evidence of perjury in. I've got six unopened letters. And if you'd like, I can open some of them and see if there's perjury in these. I wouldn't stake my life on it, but I wouldn't stake my life the other way either. Everything this city does connected with property, there's a tax auction coming up on August 28th. People can't pay their property taxes if there's a city cleanup lien on their property. If they can't pay their property taxes, it goes up to the auction. There are people in this city that are most likely losing their property at this tax auction because of city tax liens, city cleanup liens. And the providence of those liens, in my mind, is a question, is a question. Are you willing to bet the reputation of this city that there has been no perjury committed in any of the, any of the properties that people are gonna lose at the tax auction? You're here tonight at, items four and five are to correct mistakes that Patrick Lockett had in his paperwork as far as the November 4th meeting from last year. But this is not the first time he's made mistakes like that. Mr. Lockett is not a diligent person as far as making sure that perjury is not being committed. That puts every single thing that this city does connected to property at issue. And the city could be liable for every house that's been torn down, for every property that was lost because Patrick Lockett is not doing his paperwork correctly. I was hoping that under your administration, Mayor Flowers, that this would be addressed. But it has not been. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Finley. Any discussion, any questions? I would just say this, and this is not a question, it's a comment, really for your future reference and mine. Just now, you used your time to say that someone, that one of the directors is committing perjury and that paperwork is being completed incorrectly and that, you know, we could be liable for how we're operating as it relates to the tax auction and city cleanup liens. But, you know, and you were hoping things would be different. I have no idea what happened. I have no idea how anything was done incorrectly. You just basically, you know, called someone out by name and accused someone of a crime, but you didn't say in any way what the problem is so that myself and the council could try to address it. And I, you know, if there's something that we can do to help you, just like any citizen, I'm wide open and I know my colleagues are. But you were here to speak, you spoke, and certainly, we are open every day from eight to five. And if there's something you wanna email me, write me, share me, call and make an appointment to see how anything that is incorrect can be corrected, we're wide open. But I just don't think it's fruitful to come before this body and lodge that kind of allegation against someone and not say anything about what the problem is or not lead into an opportunity to speak with information, a handout, or an email. So, I'm saying for future reference, for future interaction, for future communication, I would suggest that it be done in the way that I just described. So, no. Because we can talk later, we have other things, okay? But feel free. And, but you're still, you're-
On a public record.
Mr. Finley, you're done, and we gotta move forward. But we will have other meetings and we have other ways to communicate, and you could still come and be public. Okay? All right.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Lockett.
Could I get a point of information from our city attorney to give us a definition of perjury?
Sure.
Madam City Attorney, can you indulge us with, I guess, the most general definition of perjury that we, as a council, can get a grip on the elements of perjury?
According to Google, perjury is the act of intentionally giving false information under oath or signing a legal document with false statements.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I wanted to, now, the intent is what one would have to prove if one was to convict persons of such.
It would have to be intentional, that's one thing, and you'd have to be under oath when you do it, you did it. So those would be two requirements in order to be, in order to be amount to perjury. Okay.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney.
Absolutely. And as we have just completed the public comments on agenda items, we'll call the meeting to order now. And here to do the invocation, we have Pastor Jordan Bland from Pine Bluff First Assembly of God.
Thank you, Mayor Flowers, and it's an honor to come and pray tonight. So, if you bow your heads and pray with me. Heavenly Father, we just thank you. Lord, thank you for the city, thank you for our leaders, and thank you, Lord, for what you're doing in this incredible place and incredible city. God, we thank you for Pine Bluff. We thank you that it's a city full of promise and a city full of purpose and a city full of people that are created in your image. And we thank you that you have position in leadership tonight, our mayor and our city council members and those in leadership. As Romans 13 reminds us, all authority is established by you. So anybody that's in a place of authority, God, that you have appointed or you have allowed, so, God, we pray honor and blessing over them, that you bless them and their families. Bless them as they come and bless as they go. God, we just thank you for your favor and we thank you for your anointing, God, and we thank you for your presence in all, every situation. We bless our city council, our mayor, our law enforcement, our educators, our business owners and civic leaders. We ask for divine wisdom, clarity, humility, and unity in every decision made tonight and even in the days to come. God, your word tells us in James chapter five, or James chapter one, that anyone who lacks wisdom can simply ask, and God, that you provide that wisdom. So, Lord, we're praying for that supernatural wisdom that only you can provide to our leaders in this city tonight and the days coming forward. Lord, we declare your word from Isaiah chapter 61, that Pine Bluff would be a city where beauty rises, where joy is planted, where purpose is lived out, and where your spirit brings fresh vision. We speak prophetically, Lord, that this would be a place in a city of strong roots and high vision. May this be a city where the oaks of righteousness grow tall. Leaders, families, business owners, students, all standing firm in fruitful display of the splendor of our mighty God. Lord, let Pine Bluff be known not only for where it's been, Lord, but where it's going. God, that the best is yet to come, that, God, we don't just spend our time looking in the rearview mirror, but we look through the windshield, knowing, God, that your purpose, your promises and your purposes are before us and you've got a plan and a purpose. Now, we pray blessing over our neighborhoods, every school, every business leader. And, Lord, we just pray and we lift up the mighty name of Jesus. God, it's the name above all other names. It's the name that one day every knee will bow and every tongue will confess that you are Lord. So it's that name that we lift high tonight. We thank you, Lord, for our council members, we thank you for the leaders of our great city. Use them, bring favor into their households, bring favor into this chamber. And, Lord, we look forward to what you're going to do in Pine Bluff as we pray. God, let your will be done here as it is in heaven. In the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Amen and amen.
Thank you so much, Pastor Bland. And next, we will, the cadets from Watson Chapel, junior ROTC, will lead the pledge, will not lead the pledge of allegiance. And so, I will. Please put your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you so much. Okay, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Mays.
Here.
Councilmember Holcomb.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Lockett.
Here.
Councilmember Frazier.
Here.
Councilmember Brunson.
Here.
Councilmember Denton.
Here.
Councilmember Fales.
Here.
Thank you so much. So next on the agenda is the, are the minutes. We've had them in our packets prior to this and they're in your packets now. And without any changes, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved, seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the minutes for May 19th city council meeting. Any discussion? No discussion, we'll call the question. All those in agreement to adopt the minutes of the city council meeting for May 19, 2025, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any notes? The minutes are adopted. Okay, and we will next go to the committee reporting. Ways and Means Committee will be councilmember Brown.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor. Ways and Means met just before this council meeting. We did not have any agenda items or anything from the floor, so that meeting was adjourned pretty quickly. And that concludes my report. Oh, but let me also say this, and at some point in the near future, maybe sometime this month, I wanna get with the committee members and the finance director and outside of having it just before the council meeting, have an update on the budget, where we are, make sure everything's on track. And so, I'll get with the committee members and hopefully sometime this month, we'll be able to get that done. Okay? All right, and that concludes my report.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Holcomb, will you please deliver the ordinances and resolutions committee report?
Yes, ma'am. Ma'am, we have seven agenda items. Number one is up for the third and final, final reading. Number two is up for the first reading. They are both ordinance. Number three, four, five, six, and seven are all resolution. They will be completed on tonight. All of you should have in front of you. Agenda item number eight, a resolution declaring Friday, June 6, 2025, and June 6 of subsequent years as Go Orange National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas. I move that this resolution be added to the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that these resolutions be added to the agenda. Any discussion? With no discussion, we'll call the questions. All those who wish to vote for these items be added to-
Mayor.
Four. Four will hear the roll and indicate accordingly.
Councilmember Mays. Councilmember Holcomb.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett.
Aye.
Councilmember Frazier.
Aye.
Councilmember Brunson.
Aye.
Councilmember Denton.
Aye.
Councilmember Fales.
Aye.
The items will be-
No, ma'am, ma'am, we gotta do them individually.
You gotta do them one at a time.
Oh, no batching. Okay. Okay, so that was for item number eight. And so, for item number nine, I will-
I gotta read it first?
Yes. Ask councilmember Holcomb to read the item number nine.
A resolution approving the payment of certain educational expenses as proper municipal expenses. I move that this resolution be added to the agenda.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that item number nine be added to the agenda. Any discussion?
Aye, Madam Mayor. Since we've never done this before in terms of paid educational expenses for a council member, I think we may need to set some guidelines to make sure that we are doing it right. Since in the municipal code, the only reference to educational expenses is really for uniformed and non-uniform full-time employees. But we don't have anything in the municipal code that defines educational compensation for council members. I'm not against such, but I think we need to create some type of legislation that allows it to be done, you know, across the board for future events.
The reason that I put it on there without doing so is because it is not a measure just to reimburse for educational expenses in general. It's very, very narrowly tailored, and you all will hear that. And the other thing that I considered is that after speaking with, because I had concerns too. I had the same concern and thought about needing to do that. After having a lengthy discussion with councilmember Brunson, as well as Clerk Roberts and Mr. Attorney Childers, what we're really talking about is the council approving reimbursement for very narrowly tailored research and focused work in a particular area and for funds coming from the discretionary funds versus the general fund for reimbursement for educational pursuits. And so, that's why I put it on there and I figure you all could hear it, voted up or down. Initially, I had major concerns, and once I got the information and clarity, I felt comfortable proposing it, so. I mean, because there's nothing in the, in, in any code that says you can't do it. And so, with council's consideration and permission, I just felt like it was appropriate.
I think, I mean, only problem I have is that, you know, unless we set aside some particular way that one could do this in the future, then you set a very narrowly focused opportunity that may not be available to other council members.
Well, I think what will be available to other council members is for the council to make a decision as to whether or not something should or should not be spent out of discretionary funds for something that's narrowly tailored, be it educationally related, training, travel, or what have you.
Oh, yeah.
Because I think that's what we're doing. I don't know that I would feel comfortable painting a broad brush for something like this, rather than you all making decisions, especially since the discretionary funds are pretty specific as well. Councilmember Mays.
Are you saying this five thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-eight cent? It's, what are you going to shoot?
Well, let's, let's do this. Let's add it to the agenda and you all can talk about it. Because again, you can vote it up or down, and I think right now, we're hearing the issue without it being on the agenda. And I think right now, what we're trying to do is determine whether or not it'll be on the agenda.
So, what you're saying is, this is for a education-
I'm not saying, well, I'm not saying anything right now because I think you need to hear the full presentation. Right now, we're just determining whether or not we'll put it on the agenda. And I was simply responding to councilmember Lockett's question about creating legislation to allow for this in the future versus determining whether or not it should be allowed now.
Mayor, I would just, in my opinion, I think this is something that we need to probably talk about in a committee meeting before we even bring it to the agenda.
So then, are you requesting that we refer it to committee?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
I second it.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded that this, that item number nine be pulled to refer to committee?
Would that go to administration?
It's not on the agenda. So it's not gonna be item number nine.
Well, the one we have labeled is not right now.
So this other's a move up?
Previously, maybe it's not.
Okay.
Just identified.
Okay. So it looks-
I just-
Councilmember Lockett and then council-
Yeah, I just recommend that we send it to administration.
And councilmember Frazier.
And, and I guess it's coming before us because of the amount. I don't know why it's coming before us at all. When we had our, my understanding of the discretionary fund was that we could utilize it for anything that will enhance or help our ward. So if this is something, if she's taking these classes in reference to that, and I never known anybody to come through here to spend their discretionary funds. So, I'm willing to take it to-
I would, let me speak to that. Because it was, I signed for it to actually be paid, and then there was a conversation that I had with the clerk's office and then the city attorney. And they, based upon, and we'll, and I guess we'll go over it in committee. Based upon the current code, it was determined that it needed to go before the council.
Okay, okay, I just want-
For a legal reason.
Okay.
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 If, if you are speaking specifically on the motion about it being, being pulled and referred to go to administration, but it don't, let's not speak on the material of it because-
Well, it should be, but you-
But it's not on the agenda, councilmember Mays. But, but, council, councilmember, councilmember Mays. We're, we're not gonna litigate that without it being on the agenda. And so, or have the discussion and review it. So if, do you have a comment or a question as to whether or not it should be pulled and sent to administration committee?
I say pull it. But at the same time-
But you seconded the motion, so, so are you, so you're fine with that?
No, well, I'm not.
You're, no, you're fine with it being pulled and sent to administration? Right?
Matter of fact.
Because you seconded. So you're fine with that, right? Okay. Okay, we'll move on. We, did we vote on?
We didn't vote on.
We didn't vote on.
No, we got it. It's pulled.
No vote, just discussion, so we need to vote.
Pulled it.
Okay. Oh, you said it was a vote on, that's why I was-
There was a motion and a second.
I mean, it's not on the agenda.
Okay, but y'all, hold on. There was a motion and a second, so we're gonna go ahead and vote. Otherwise, if it was a request, then we would do it that way. So let's just go ahead and be, stay in keeping with the process. Any further discussion? No further discussion? Councilmember Fales.
Just clarify, so we're voting on whether or not to add this to the agenda?
We're, at now, we're voting, there's a substitute motion to vote to pull it and specifically send it to administration.
And, and actually, the city council member who sponsored it can just pull it for right now. We don't, we won't have to vote for it.
The mayor.
I, I sponsored it and, and I entertained a motion that is specifically sending it to a particular committee. So that's why we're gonna go ahead and vote. Okay. We'll call the question. All those in agreement to pull item number nine, which is not an agenda item, but we just referenced it as such for this purpose, to pull it and send it to administration committee, indicate in your favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item has been pulled and it will be, and it will go to administration committee.
Agenda item number 10, a resolution authorizing the acquisition of real property, 4500 Union Avenue. I move that this resolution be added to the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that agenda item number 10 be added to the agenda. Any discussion? All those in agreement that it be added, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's a roll call. Well, we know what your votes are gonna be.
Councilmember Mays. Councilmember Holcomb.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett.
Aye.
Councilmember Frazier.
Aye.
Councilmember Brunson.
Aye.
Councilmember Denton.
Aye.
Councilmember Fales.
Aye.
And the motion passes.
Agenda item number 11, a joint resolution of the city councils of Texarkana, Texas, Texarkana, Arkansas, Whitehall, Arkansas, and Pine Bluff, Arkansas, to express unified support for the Red River Ar- support for the Red River Army Depot, R.A.D., and the Pine Bluff Arsenal, PBA, as critical components of national defense, regional security, and economic sustainability. I move that this resolution be added to the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that item number eleven be added to the agenda. Any discussion? With no discussion, we'll call the question. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Mays?
Aye.
Councilmember Holcomb?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett?
Aye.
Councilmember Frazier?
Aye.
Councilmember Brunson?
Aye.
Councilmember Denton?
Aye.
Councilmember Fails?
Aye.
It's been passed, and item number eleven's added to the agenda. Okay. Does that conclude your report? Okay, thank you so much, Councilmember Holcomb. Councilmember Frazier, will you please deliver the Economic and Community Development Report?
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report, except I did meet with Mr. Larry Matthews, and I would like to give a project update with the projects that's going on. Main Street Scape Project Phase Two is seventy percent completed, grant signed with the Arkansas Department of Transportation. University Drive Street Scape Project is sixty-five percent completed. MLK Football Soccer Field Project, seventy percent completed. DRB Delta Rhythm and Bayou Wellness Parks Projects, seventy-five percent completed. Grant Street Multi Trail Project Construction has started. Sewer Projects, University Drive Project, eighty-five percent completed. Barracuda Street Park Pavilion, eighty percent completed. Home AARP Homeless Project Acquisition and Review underway, which is what we're going to discuss in this meeting. And I would like to say that most of this probably would have been done, but because of all of the rain and stuff, it hindered the process, so I just ask you all to bear with us. That's my report, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Frazier. Councilmember Denton, will you please deliver the report on Public Health and Welfare Committee?
Madam Mayor, we have not met, but we're scheduled to meet this Thursday, June the fifth, at four, and I will get with the City Clerk's Office and send out a reminder.
Thank, does that conclude your report?
Yes.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Denton.
Four p.m.?
Yeah.
Councilmember Lockett, will you please deliver the Public Works Committee Report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Public Works Committee met on May twenty-seventh in the old City Council Chambers at one o'clock. We had a public works update by Mr. Larry Matthews. The Harbor Oaks Pumping Station project is on schedule. Previous projects that were discussed are on schedule, namely those in Martin Luther King Park for the new soccer fields and the golf course amenities. The Street Department, they gave a pretty good discussion about covets and sinkholes and yards and the need to try to sturdy those up. Currently trying to work on the sinkhole situation near Bel Air Drive. We talked about a need for a striping machine. We get a lot of complaints from citizens talking about the inability to see the stripes on the road. However, that machine was estimated at about two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. And I asked Mr. Doggett that, was that a priority within the needs of the Street Department? And he related to me that we must get a priority list of equipment that is in a kind of like a best needs position for the Street Department. So we're working on that. He talked about some trees that needed to be cut to ensure that power lines weren't endangered, and he talked about the ongoing project of the Arkansas Natural Asphalt Project of the potholes. And also said that in the second week of June that the Street Department was looking forward to paving about two point two miles of road within the city. So we talked about that and the assessment now. Madam Mayor, the assessment for the total pavement of the road came to something like sixty-two million, so we're not going to be doing those three hundred and seventy-nine thousand miles of road anytime soon, but we are looking at prioritizing what we can get done before years end. Cleaning Beautiful also gave an update on the cleanup project that they're using as a citywide model that's going to commence in the third ward. They're working on that. What timeframe do we, do you have for that?
So we're looking to do it like late September. There's an exact date set, but I'll have to get back with you.
Right, right, I need to take it in my notes. And we also, Madam Mayor, we talked about some flower beds on Martha Mitchell that need to be addressed because they were not put in the budget of Cleaning Beautiful. So Mr. Matthews said that he'd get with you on how we may best address those within the city's budget. And that concludes my report.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
And so Mr. Doggett said that we need to get a priority list for the equipment for the streets. Is he going to complete that list?
Yes, I guess we've been talking about it for a while, so.
I guess that's my question.
Yeah, so when, with that, let me, let me put some, let me get with him and see if he has that and how far along he is with that, because we have been talking about that for some time.
I would like, I would like to get that list as soon as possible, you know? We have to get additional equipment. I do personally think that the striping machine is a priority.
Okay.
We need to stripe our streets, and so, especially when the weather gets bad and things like that, it's hard to see. And I know my dad, when he was on the council, he said that a whole bunch.
Oh, yeah.
And I think sometimes it fell on deaf ears, but it is important, you know? When it rains, it is hard to navigate. And we all live here, for the most part, everybody lives in Pine Bluff, so we're familiar with the roads, but you also have to think about those individuals that are visiting.
Right.
They may not know our roads as well, and so if they're not familiar with how our roads move and turn and curve, then it could cause an accident because they can't see. So I think striping is very important, but if you can get that list.
I'll have it by the next. We should meet on the last Tuesday of this month, talk to Director Doggett on tomorrow and see if he can bring to our next Public Works Meeting that, that equipment prioritization.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
And just for the, yes, please.
I agree with you. I'm like Brown, Jr. They've been saying this stuff for a while. We have meetings about the streets, you know, constantly, and after the day is gone, where's the money? You know?
The money's in the budget.
Excuse me, Mayor, I got the audit coming soon, another, another audit of the Street Department, because those streets are too bad out there. There's no excuse for that. We're telling these citizens every meeting is going to be, take place next, next week meeting, next, and the streets are still bad. We're the only city in the country ride on bad streets every day. Don't y'all see that? I mean, really? You got to put more fight into the game, you know? Know what I'm saying? People, these citizens are tired of, we're up here meeting. When I talk, I get things done, but I got to go with everybody to agree to it. It's up to me, we'll fix them all. Thank you.
Well, it is up to me, and we have, and you're aware of this, we've actually not just talked about, but dedicated funds and started addressing the potholes for sure. That's number one. Number two, just for the record, I want the council to be aware that we have been working on a needs assessment as it relates to equipment, supplies, and staffing, really since day one, and, and we'll continue to work on the streets, but also be prepared during the next budget cycle to set priorities based upon the resources that we have. So I guess the last thing I would say to this issue before we move on is that Pine Bluff is most certainly not the only city in Arkansas, let alone the country, that is dealing with challenges as it relates to our streets. And, but, we are among those cities that are being proactive and doing something about it. And now, we're going to go ahead and move forward.
May I speak?
We just spoke.
Well, again, because we have people behind the scenes.
Councilmember, Councilmember.
Trying to, trying to control the city council members.
Councilmember, nobody's doing that, and we're going to go ahead and move forward. Thank you.
Mayor, I would like to make a praise report, if it's okay?
I'm sorry?
The Street Department, a praise report for the Street Department.
Oh, you said a what report?
A praise, a praise, a praise. I would like to say, I want to commend them because since I've been in.
Oh, like the Lord, okay. I was thinking a praise, I like appraisal.
Yeah, yes, I mean, since I've been here, I have never, and not saying that it hadn't, but I have never seen a street sweeper, but they have constantly been coming down our block and in our section, and I have been seeing them. And I can say that I have been seeing potholes and stuff being fixed and staying fixed, not messing up my car again. So I just want to say openly, just as much as we complain about things, I want to openly praise them for the things that I do see. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember. Okay, so we have several other reports, so we're going to move on to Councilmember Fails. Will you please deliver the Development and Planning Committee Report?
So Development and Planning, we did meet on May the fifteenth. We have a couple of items on the agenda tonight, and in terms of our next meeting, we should be meeting maybe like on June the twenty-seventh, tentatively, but I'll get with our committee members to confirm that, and that concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Fails. Councilmember Brunson, will you please deliver the Traffic and Aviation Committee Report?
Thank you, Mayor. Traffic and Aviation has not met this, but we do plan to meet, but I did want to say I was not here for Skyhook, but I know it was a great event. I saw a lot of pictures, I saw a lot of enthusiasm behind it, and I'm excited that they came this year, and I'm looking forward for them to come next year as well. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Brunson. Councilmember Holcomb, will you please deliver the Administration Committee Report?
Yes, ma'am. Administration Committee will meet next Tuesday, June the tenth via Zoom at four thirty p.m. Four o'clock, is that true? Next Tuesday? That's June tenth, four, it's four o'clock, good, Ms. Roberts?
Yes, sir.
I have your blessing.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That concludes my report.
Does that conclude? Okay, thank you so much, Councilmember. And Councilmember Brown, will you please deliver the Public Safety Committee Report?
Yes, Mayor. Public Safety has not met since the last council meeting. We will have a meeting on Wednesday, and that's going to be June the fourth at one thirty p.m. in the old Council Chambers. There will be a Zoom option as well, is that okay? You don't Public Safety with me, correct? Okay. Mediation.
Oh, yeah, we'll be finished.
So we're going to change it? No, that's the mediation day. Wednesday? Wednesday. Oh, it should be. Following Wednesday? Let's do that. We'll do next Wednesday. The Wednesday after? Yes, ma'am. Okay. So is that okay? Next Wednesday? One thirty. All right, so we'll be, so that will be on the, what day is that? The eleventh? Okay. And also, I will asking all council members to support agenda item number seven. This is for the Fire Department and for the Fire Training Building. We're trying to get that project up and going, so we definitely appreciate your support on that. And, I'm sorry? Do they have that still going to be planned to commission to, to train? No, no, this is a contract with the person, the company that's going to put the facility there. Okay, and that concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Brown. And next on the agenda are the proposed ordinances and resolutions. Councilmember Holcomb, will you please lead us on that item?
Agenda item number one, an ordinance to modify applicant disqualification for the Pine Bluff Police Department up for the third and final reading.
An ordinance to modify applicant disqualifications for the Pine Bluff Police Department.
Move for adoption?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that this item be adopted. Any discussion?
I have.
Okay, Councilmember Holcomb and then Councilmember Frazier.
Is it okay if I call?
And then Councilmember Mays.
Okay, if I call Chief Hadley?
Yes, please. Chief Hadley, can you please come to the front to engage member questions?
Thank you, Chief.
Yes.
I just, just one question for clarification. There's been a lot of talk that if this legislation is passed, that there are some officers, and I'm very careful how I term this, rogue officers will be hired back. Can you clarify that?
Yes, let me clarify that. I do, I appreciate that question because we've heard that also. We are not looking to hire anyone. I think it's also in the ordinance that we're not trying to hire anybody back that's been hired, and I'm giving you just some of the examples, such as like insubordination, fighting, use of force that's been sustained, theft. These are very low violations that we're looking to hire people back on, giving them a second chance. They may have did things that while they were young years ago, and as they matured over the years, want to come back and just be given another second chance. But we're not trying to hire anybody back that's been coupled, that's been terminated for violent offenses or very culpable offenses in our policies.
Okay, that's all I have.
Anything else?
While you're here, do any other members have any questions for Chief Hadley?
I would like to say something, and me and Chief Hadley had a conversation, and I told him I just can't support it.
Yes, sir.
In good conscience, I can't support it because, and first of all, I want to say, reiterate, when I was in committee meeting, I asked the chief to submit to me these policies and stuff that was in here so that I could really read and understand what was being done. And second, I still feel like it's, it needs to be something that the citizens should know more about and not be rushed through. Third, just when I think about rehiring someone that was fired, and we say for minor infractions, and my, this is, this is the thing, first of all, when you talk about termination, that's a serious reprimand, to be fired. So if you're fired and it was for minor infractions, my question is, was it more than one minor infraction that caused all of a sudden for this minor fraction to get you fired? And then what was that to? Let me just say this. In the handbook, when I finally got it at one, almost one o'clock today from William, "The purpose of the law enforcement employees representing government bear the heavy responsibility of maintaining their own conduct, the honor and integrity of the government entity that they represent. It is the purpose of this policy to provide additional guidance to the standards of conduct embodied in the law enforcement officer's Code of Ethics. This department's mission, statement, and core values, as well as other ethical directives issued by superior governing authorities that may be applicable to this department, so that the employees of this department will better understand prohibitions and limitations pertaining to their conduct and activities while on or off duty." The policy, it says, "It is the policy of this department to maintain the highest standard, the highest standard of integrity by working diligently to maintain the community's trust. All departmental employees must recognize that they are held at a higher standard than the private citizen they protect in addition to representing the department." And I'm not going to go any further into the rest of this, but I feel some sort of way, it just doesn't sit well for me that we're saying, oh, we need more police officers, so now we're just going to go back and hire people that we fired. And I know that there's going to be a process, but how much trust is a seasoned police officer or anybody going to have in someone that was fired coming back as a partner, to be their partner, to watch their back? How is it that if that person that we hired back that was fired end up arresting someone? How is it that if that person that we hired back that was fired end up arresting someone and they have to go to court in order to be a witness, to testify? Any good lawyer is going to bring up the fact that they were fired and why they were fired, and if their testimony is even worth the salt that they even say. So, it's just, I know this probably gonna pass, and that's okay with me. I just told him, and I was honest with him, that I just don't feel like I could support this legislation. So my answer is going to be no.
I'd like to respond.
Yes, please.
Okay. I don't know the conversation that you and, uh, chief did have, but the policy about, the policies, they are online also, so you could pull that, pull that up. But in reference to what you're saying about, um, us hiring back officers that were terminated, ma'am, the appeal board has terminated, or has overturned terminations that we have done also. There's no difference, if the appeal board, when we terminate somebody and they go before our appeal board, and then they overturn the decision that we have made, it's just the same thing. But again, at the end of the day, it would be our discretion on who we bring back. We're gonna look at and review the files of each and every one. We will not hire anybody back that would bring public shame to this police department, to the city council, to our mayor. We're just saying, give us, we're trying to be open-minded, like I said again, to the, to the lower offenses. I respect your decision and anybody else's decision that is up there. But we're just trying to have an open mind to be able to open it up, to see if we can be able to bring people back on the lower offenses. But we're gonna monitor those people that we do bring in, interview. There's a process that they have to go through, but at the end of the day also, they all will still know this. We've got twelve months that they can get terminated again before they even make the appeal, uh, uh, before they can even make the appeal board process.
And this was one other thing that I had a, a, a issue about, but I didn't really voice it too much in the meeting. We were in a committee meeting, and they started naming names of why they wanted to do this legislation. And that didn't sit well with me either, because if you're, if you're creating legislation so you can hire certain people back, that's setting the precedence for things, and so, so I'm just gonna leave it there. And again, whatever the council decides, I'm gonna roll with it, you know? But I just have to say, while I'm aware of that, but, yes, ma'am.
Um, yes.
I'm sorry?
Uh, councilmember Mays is next, and then councilmember Brown.
Thank you, thank you, mayor. Chief, how are you?
Just fine, sir.
A couple, a couple things, uh, the cars, we gotta make sure they have the label then back on them. You know, we, when you see these cars coming down the road, you can't, I can't see that.
Councilmember Mays, I'm just gonna ask you to stick to the.
Well, I'm talking about the, I'm talking with the chief, mayor.
Well, no, but we're not chatting. We're talking about a particular.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not chatting.
We're talking about a particular.
He know what I'm talking about, the labels on the cars, we can't put fear in people in Pine Bluff, they can't see the car coming down the road.
Councilmember, you making a good point, but it's not the right time. We got it, no, we have to stay on message and stay on the item.
It's a good point, though.
But I'm, I acknowledge that.
When I speak, you always, you gotta try to cut me off because you know I'll be right.
I'm not try, I just said, you, we were next to speak, but I'm, but we gonna stay on.
Let's try to fix these cars if we can.
Councilmember, we gonna stay on the item.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
About the end of the year. Look at, and look at number, now, just, let's look at this paperwork here, chief. Number one, two, three, and four on this paperwork, you can't even read that. Who, who did this, the copying? Look at this stuff. Look, look at this, this is pathetic. You know? Y'all got to say anything I got, I have? Yeah, that's just, this is pathetic to be a professional. Come on.
Councilmember, do you have any?
Mayor, mayor, what is this, mayor?
I can read it. Now, do you have any more comments on the, the resolution?
I'm gonna support them because I wanna see it work, but this is, this is.
Okay, so if, okay, thank you.
This is not right, y'all can't read.
Thank you, councilmember Brown.
Uh, yes, um, chief, I, um, that's first question. The policy that we have right now basically says that if someone is terminated, they cannot be brought back.
Yes, sir.
At all. So, other cities, uh, comparable, comparable to Pine Bluff, um, you know, close to us, do they have the same type of policy in place, or is that?
I'm not aware of that. Uh, the only thing I can really attest is it does not affect our accreditation at all.
Okay.
I did speak with our accreditation, uh, manager. It will not affect our accreditation, we can, they can continue with moving up to accreditation one, even if we still did this.
Okay. No, I guess, I guess what I was trying to say is like if, you know, uh, say Little Rock or, or Maumell, or someone, someone that's close, do they have, you don't know if they have a policy similar to where if there's, someone is terminated, they're able to be brought back after a certain length of time, or?
No, I, no, I don't, sir. Uh, every city, I mean, every city council does their ordinances different, so I can't compare our city ordinances with another municipality.
Okay. Um, and then also to councilmember Frazier, I know she had, uh, concerns about, uh, bringing in officers that have been terminated, things like that. But, um, and, and what chief was basically telling us was that the offenses that these officers may have committed may not necessarily be, uh, you know, so egregious to the point where, well, definitely, if they've been decertified, then we know those people cannot be eligible because they've been decertified. So, that would be a case where, uh, officer was decertified, then you know that that officer is not able to return. And so, um, and so when, when an officer commits a, you know, really bad offense, then that's the process that that officer would go through. So, I would say those officers that have not been decertified, they may have been terminated for something, and it could be just as simple as, uh, maybe not showing up one day or something like that, or missed a couple days of work, or, you know, things like that. You know, I, I do believe that people deserve a second chance. You know, you know, I'm not saying that, you know, if they've done something very bad, that they should be brought back. But, you know, some of those offenses like that, where it was just more or less just a, a policy violation, some kind of way something happened, you know, so many absences or something like that, I think those individuals do deserve a chance. Um, you know, and it could have happened a long time ago, it could have been something that, well, maybe they were just getting started, they were going through something in their lives, and, and they need a second chance. And so.
I'm just, uh, you know.
I, I understand, I, I just, you know, and, and I respect your opinion on it, um, but, you know, I, I think people do deserve a second chance.
And, and, and hear me out, I do believe that people have.
Okay, hold on, y'all, we're not gonna do.
Okay, 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 um, I think that, I think that's all I have.
Okay, councilmember, thank you so much. Councilmember Brunson?
I just have one question. Would this, um, change, is it just for the police, or will the fire take on it? So it's just one, is it, I mean, it's not.
This is just for the police department?
For the police department, okay. So, if they decided to, they would have to do a?
Do their own?
Yeah, okay. That was my question.
Any other, any further discussion?
I did have a couple of questions as well. Um, so, you, councilmember Brown asked about other departments, and I was wondering the same thing. That was one of my questions, and I did look it up when you indicated you, you weren't aware. Um, and I just put in one city and put in Little Rock, just because it's close to us and it's, and it's our capital city. Terminated police officers in Little Rock can be hired back, but it is subject to certain conditions and approval processes, which is what we're trying to do, I think, in this measure. If an employee separates from the department and requests reinstatement within twenty-four months, they can be reinstated. They have a civil service commission, we have appeals committees comprised of employees, uh, or other city personnel, and a mem- a member of our, um, uh, representing the city attorney's office. So, you know, I think that we can point to at least one, and I suspect several other cities that do this. And just to allay people's concerns, because there's no way in the world I would ever support anything that would put a rogue officer, a violent officer, or someone who really doesn't belong on any force, I would support, I would never support that, um, person be brought back to our department. But, um, just to clarify, can someone, um, be terminated for, um, being late several times or, um, abusing, uh, leave?
Yes, ma'am, they can.
Can someone, uh, be, uh, terminated for wrecking a vehicle?
Yes, ma'am, they can.
Okay. Um, are those the kinds of, uh, minor infractions that you might be referring to?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Under this code, um, under this legislation, would you all ever consider rehiring someone who was, um, violent, abusive, or inappropriate with the public?
Absolutely not.
Thank you. Was this in any way specific to any, hiring any individual back?
No, ma'am, I don't know where that came from.
And prior to this and other efforts to, um, strengthen our department, can you give us a little bit of understanding of where we are now in terms of patrol? How are, how, what does it look like in terms of the streets that are patrolled every day? Like, how many officers might we have, rain, give, give us a range per shift?
As of right now, we probably have, on a good day, um, it's probably four to five officers that actually works the street. Because we have staggering shift, you may have nine or ten officers per shift, but they're not all on the shift on that same day because of the staggering off days. And then that's also if somebody does not call in sick, or if somebody's off on vacation. We're having a, a, a real hard time right now without staffing. That's why we're trying to be open-minded, to try to bring steel back. People who have experience, who have worked here before and know the system, and exactly, we can get them back in uh, because of the low level of offenses, and they can be able to at least be of service. Again, um, there's a process that they're gonna go through. Myself and chief warrior would have that last say, so we're going to go through it with a fine tooth and comb to make sure that we're still bringing back, uh, someone that just at least meets the criteria of what we're looking for. We will not bring anybody back again for those strong culpable offenses, or anything that's been a violent or theft, or something like that nature.
And just the la, I, I think you made a really good point about the appeal board having the same authority that this would give the department, the authority to do.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll just, I'll just end it there and, and thank you, and just make sure that we have no further discussion.
Can I say something? I appreciate what you're doing. My, my thing is, we getting Tom back, I'm gonna support that. I just wanna see more police when you traveling around. In the o- other cities, they police be on, on the corners, you know, we parked out there, where you can see the car. And we have to get our cars back black and white, not all black, if we can, coming up with the, when buying cars. And I support that, I'm not gonna support all those cars where you can't see them. Let's take this city back.
Thank you, uh, councilmember Mays, and I agree that, um, visibility is, is very important. I'll just, see, we agree.
Thank you.
Okay, alright. Any further discussion? No further discussion? Well, I'll entertain, oh, no, we have, I did get a, a motion in a second. So we'll call the question, for all of those in agreement to pass, um, no, this, uh, yeah, this is the third reading, to pass ordinance number one, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
The motion is passed.
Thank you, council.
Agenda item number two, an ordinance providing for the rezoning of certain territory in the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas. Fifty-nine hundred block of Dollarway Road and two hundred block of Lane Street up for the first reading.
Whereas the city of Pine Bluff Planning Commission held a public hearing on April twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-five, as provided for in section six, Act one eighty-six of the statutes of the state of Arkansas, the purposes of which was to hear any and all persons interested in amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Pine Bluff by providing for the rezoning of certain property. And whereas it has been expressly stated by the city council of the city of Pine Bluff that the zoning ordinance should be amended to provide for the rezoning of said property. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, section one, that the following described property be, and the, and the same is hereby established and defined as B-three highway commercial for all future purposes as set forth and defined in the zoning ordinance. Section two, all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict.
Place it on the calendar. Agenda item number three, a resolution amending the twenty-twenty-five municipal budget to add two labor positions within the Pine Bluff Street Department and approve the job description and compensation for the positions.
Whereas the Pine Bluff Street Department is in need of two labor positions, and whereas the attached job description and compensation for the, uh, physicians have, has been vetted and approved by the human resources department. And whereas the line on items for the two open truck driver positions within the street department should be removed from the twenty-twenty-five municipal budget to provide for the funding of said positions. And whereas it is in the best interest of the city of Pine Bluff for two labor positions to be created in the Pine Bluff Street Department. And now, now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, section one, that the twenty-twenty-five municipal budget is amended with reference to the part thereof pertaining to the Pine Bluff Street Department to add two labor positions, the job description and compensation for the positions are detailed in the attachment which is incorporated herein by reference, section two, that the line items for the two open truck driver positions within the Pine Bluff Street Department shall be removed from the twenty-twenty-five municipal budget for the purpose of funding the salary of thirty-one thousand, two hundred, twelve dollars plus benefits for each labor position. Section three, that the finance department will modify the twenty-twenty-five budget to reflect that changes twenty-twenty, I'm sorry, section four, resolution number forty-eight ninety approved May nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five, which is addressed, which addressed the subject matter of this resolution was not properly adopted and hence procedurally defective. This resolution shall replace the resolution and assume the number forty-eight ninety.
Move for adoption?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that resolution number three be adopted, any discussion? Councilmember Mays?
Section two. It has, right there on that second line, about, in section two. Uh, it has, is that removed, what's that word right there?
It should be from, the F is missed, missed from there, removed from the twenty-twenty-five municipal budget.
So, you're allowed twenty-six.
Remove from.
Remove from, and you have R O M, it's just.
It's just a typo.
Well, we need, we need, we need to make it right.
So that's why we have a process to do this. So we'll, we'll get it corrected, okay? Did you see anything else? Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, it's been moved and seconded that, uh, item number three be adopted. All those in support indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed.
Agenda item number four, a resolution, amending re- resolution forty-eight thirty-eight to correct the parcel number and subdivision for property fifty-six seventeen Chatham Street, twenty-one seventy-six.
Whereas the parcel number and subdivision needs to be corrected with respect to a property listed in resolution number forty-eight thirty-eight passed November fourth, twenty-twenty-four, titled a resolution providing for placement of costs of correcting certain notices on tax books as delinquent taxes and collected as such. Now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that resolution number forty-eight thirty-eight passed November fourth, twenty-twenty-four is amended as follows. Respecting property described as lot seven, block seven, in Highway Edition, and located, uh, fifty-six seventeen Chatham Street, twenty-one seventy-six, which is found on page twenty-five of resolution number forty-eight thirty-eight, should reflect the following changes. A change to the parcel number on line fifteen, a change to the subdivision listed in, on line fifteen. The code enforcement department will cause this resolution to be filed in the deed of, deed and lien records of Jefferson County, Arkansas, and mail a copy to the last known address of the property owner.
Move for adoption?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that resolution, uh, item number four be adopted, any discussion? No discussion, we'll call the question, all those who agree, who, uh, support adoption, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's, uh, motion passes.
Agenda item number five, a resolution, amending resolution number forty-eight thirty-eight to correct the parcel number for a property twenty-five ten North Lane.
Whereas the parcel number needs to be corrected with respect to a property listed in resolution number forty-eight thirty-eight passed November fourth, twenty-twenty-four, titled a resolution providing for placement of costs of correcting certain notices on tax books as delinquent taxes and collected as such. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that resolution number forty-eight thirty-eight passed November fourth, twenty-twenty-four is amended as follows. Respecting property described as lot, uh, oh, goodness. Respecting property described as lot, oh goodness, we're gonna say as follows. We're gonna skip that, gonna go to a parcel number on line nine from nine thirty-one twelve, one twenty-two eighty-six to read nine thirty-one twenty-two eighty-six oh two. The Code Enforcement Department will cause this resolution to be filed in the deed and lien records of Jefferson County, Arkansas, and mail a copy to the last known address of the property owner.
Move for adoption?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that resolution item number five be adopted. Any discussion? No discussion, we'll call the question. All those in support of the adoption of resolution number five indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item number six, a resolution providing for placement of costs of correcting certain nuisances on tax books as delinquent taxes and collected as such.
Whereas ACA fourteen fifty-four ninety-three.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that resolution item number six be adopted. Any discussion?
Yes.
Councilmember Mays.
Thank you, thank you. I talked with Ms. Vaughn and she said that nobody had ever had, got back in contact with her about this. These are some high dollar amounts for, for property and I think we should look into them again. You know, you come up five thousand, nine thousand, six thousand dollars. Most of their property, seven thousand, eight thousand, I've never seen it just high. This is like the people's houses.
Most likely, Councilmember, most likely demolitions.
Well, she want more time, you, you just can't go get, what's that?
But I believe at this point, if, if we're, if we have it at this point, the house has already been demolished. This is what it costs the city to demolish that home.
I understand that, but she was saying there's no, no communication to see what she really need. And I'm not gonna support it because I don't know how the rest of these people in here.
She had it demolished, Tom?
Well, I would assume with this amount.
With the three thousand?
Yeah. Three thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Usually if it's that, something with that amount, that's most likely a demo.
Yeah, we talked with Pastor Lockett and he's gonna get with her. I mean, the communication has to be better, it's a senior citizens calling about their property. And then again, some of y'all send, not you Pastor Lockett, but some of y'all send so much paperwork out and it's not explanatory to the city council or women, you know? I think we need a better job of communicating with our citizens. You can't charge the person seven, three thousand dollars and no explanation. Some of them got eight thousand, seven thousand, nine thousand, they can't, they. You call, send me that stuff, I'm gonna be like, what are you talking about? Not you, but I'm just saying. I'm not gonna support this because I want y'all to give it to the rest of these people on this list and make sure they not having no problem because if they don't pay this, what's gonna happen? Gonna take your property, right? Right? Close. I mean, if they can't pay this, you gonna put them, put them on the list where they, they can't pay for it. Gonna put a bunch of liens on the people property. Some of them are already poor people trying to make it. If we can't work out a, a, a payment plan for them, you know, we might as well.
Councilmember, I don't, I don't think a payment plan would be an, I think, I believe that's an option. Am I correct? Not from there, okay.
Well, what I'm saying is what if we can do to help them, you know, eight thousand, seven thousand?
Councilmember Frazier?
I, I just have a question, I mean, unless something has changed since, since I've last dealt with these property. When a property is reported for grass not being cut or, or hazardous, the house is hazardous to the community or whatever for demolition, isn't there a process where that owner is notified and they're given opportunity to come before the committee? And then even when they come before the committee, they can work out something during that time before it gets to this part? How, I just want to clarify the process if you don't mind, but I, I thought they are notified.
Yes, they are notified. We, we sent out three letters. And it should have addressed this on Ag Data, okay? And when we send it out, we send it out by certified mail. We get the green card back. That mean that we have notified you about it. Now, they can come in, they can come to P, uh, Planning and Development, we can talk to them and go from there, but anything for is discussing about payments and things of that nature, we don't do that.
Well, no, no, I wasn't talking about payment, but as far as whatever is wrong with their house, whether it's grass needing to be cut or the house needing to be demolished, that's something that you all discuss so that they can get that done.
Right.
And give time for them to get that done.
They are notified, yes ma'am.
Excuse me, but Ms. Vaughn said she have, hasn't received anything. Well, she received something, but no, no follow-up.
When you say follow-up, can you explain that?
Well, just, she tried to call back and couldn't get an answer or something like that, she was telling me. I mean, we talked to her.
Yes, we did, and that was the first that I've heard from her. That was the first that I've heard from her when you called me today. Because all my calls, I mean, it's laid out for me every day, Christie laid it out for me. And Ms. Vaughn have not, and I will go on record, she have not contacted me. And this usually happen after they get the bill. Then all of a sudden, these things happen. But everyone is notified.
But as, as far as, a lot of these people here on this list are senior citizens?
I, I have, I don't know if they're senior, all I know is a name and address and a parcel number.
Yeah, but I can't support this list until we look into it some more because Ms. Vaughn is a dissatisfied citizen.
Well, I understand.
Can you, can you? I have a question.
Yes ma'am.
It says to piggyback off of that. Cause I'm looking at this list and I know Ms. Vaughn, but I, I don't know at, on that level anybody else or at all. And I've heard a lot about, in this discussion about grass not being cut, but I'm suspecting that there are other code violations that lead to this.
Yes ma'am.
Can you give us some examples of how long it takes to get to this point? From the first time there's contact from Code Enforcement about one of these properties to this amount and there, there being a demolition? Like, what kind of timeframe are we talking about? And what are some of the code violations we're talking about?
Okay, it takes, uh, once the code officer decides, while he's out, he see a burnt house, we haven't tagged it, we'll tag it, we'll come in, we'll write it up. That's usually two weeks right there. Then we'll send out the notice, that's thirty days right there. Then we'll send out another notice, that's another thirty days. So in this whole process, you can get up to a hundred and twenty days. It'll sometime be years before we even get to it.
Yeah, that's why I ask, because I heard it can be years.
Yes, it's years, we have one that's been sitting for eight years. So it's just, you know.
And what are some of the code violations with that house?
That house would be, uh, the roof is caved in, the sides are bulging out. And so we, we'll go forth and we'll take it to the, we'll take it and we'll beat it out.
Largely uninhabitable.
Yes.
So it's not a situation where somebody wasn't cutting their grass?
Right.
Y'all came and cut it and then it got to a certain amount?
No, you would get three thousand dollars.
And then you demolished the.
Right, yes ma'am.
Right, okay.
Because we, there was, that mean that they did not contact us. She could have came in and told us that I'll take care of myself. And we would have no problem with that. We come to our department, Department head and he'll, not Department head, Alderman, and we'll, we'll talk about it, you know? But all this after the fact, we can't do anything about it after the fact. And, and that was a burnt house, it was a burnt house. And matter of fact, it took us a while to get to it. So it's nothing malicious in any of this, it's just the rules that we're following.
So then the, the houses that you were talking about are caved in roofs?
Caved in, burnouts.
Burnout.
Yes ma'am.
Maybe some houses where people are breaking into and living in or sometimes the, uh-huh.
They actually, yeah, they abandoned. Or they may be doing drugs out of it or something of that nature.
And so it's really kind of a public safety issue, leaving them there and not doing this.
Right, that's it.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, thank you. Any, any further discussion? Councilmember Lockett?
Yes sir, I got one question. Of these parcels that are on this particular resolution, they've all been demolished?
Yes, yes, they all have.
Okay, so there's, there's nothing we can do because legally the work has been done.
Yes sir.
So to do anything but to try to recoup what the city has paid
would be malfeasance on our part, is, is what I'm trying to explain.
Uh, you know, I used to, I used to chair development and planning and one thing I tell everybody, if the house is gone, there's nothing else we can talk about.
Right.
As long as there's a standing structure, we can talk about rehabbing or doing something to it. But as a contractor has removed the property from.
Yes.
Has manu- maneuvered the structure from the lot, that's, that's nothing else to, to talk about. Only to pay, somebody had to pay for that demolition of it.
The city paid for.
But the city want their money.
That's right.
Yes, right.
Am I right?
Yes.
And you trying to, you trying to, we're, we're trying to take money from poor people versus.
Everybody, everybody, you don't know, everybody's not poor.
Anybody gonna pay you all?
Everybody's not poor.
Anybody gonna pay you all nine thousand dollars, six thousand dollars? And yeah, and this is the, cost of sending the paperwork sometime and, you know.
Well, I, I'll say this, Councilmember, the, the property owner does have an option to demo the home themselves. That option is there.
Yes.
And if we're talking about a burnout, nine times out of ten, that property owner has received money from the insurance company and they elected not to demo it, rebuild? It's just left there in Pine Bluff to be burnt out houses? And while someone may complain about this, we have ten other people complaining about how the city looks, how unsafe that block might be? So I just want to make sure that we're fleshing out this conversation and it's not just about, you know, one person or even a list of people who are upset about where we are now with the cost to the city to do something about something. And you know, we get things done and part of getting things done is addressing that issue. And there's a cost to it and we have to recoup it. We can't just go around, you know, as a city, paying for something that maybe someone has gotten money to do. And I'm not saying that's the case in every situation, but I just, as people are here and as people are watching, this is not a situation about somebody didn't cut their grass and we go cut it and somehow, you know, a hundred and twenty days later, we're asking for six thousand dollars or nine thousand dollars. That is not what this is. Okay, any further discussion?
All I'm saying is look into it a little more.
And Councilmember, he said he hadn't heard from, uh, the, the resident that you talked about and I'm not saying name because I'm not putting anything on anybody, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna defend our personnel and, and, and leadership that if they don't hear from anybody, they can't call them back. And as you heard today, you called as you do, as you should, and he responded today, but he hadn't heard from anybody before that.
She, we talked, he talked to her.
I said before that.
No, 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 I talked to her today.
Today?
Today, yeah, today.
But before that, he hadn't heard from her, that's what he said.
I looked over the list, I look over all the list I get. And the people in my ward or in the city, I try to call them and let them know and they be like, I haven't heard anything.
But they get, they get letters from the post office where they have to sign before he gets it back. Somebody signed, somebody knew. So I, I'm just, and I, I'm not trying to beat a dead horse because we all want to get through the agenda and go home, but, but we don't want anyone left from this meeting thinking that we are supportive of people losing their property of, of, you know, and, and them being mistreated or not communicated with, or they didn't get anything from the city and then the city went and did something and say, now you owe money. That is not what is happening here. Okay, so we're gonna go ahead, Councilmember, we're gonna go ahead and call the question on this because we got four more and then we have people who need to speak. It has been moved and seconded that resolution, item number six, be adopted. All those in agreement with adoption indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes.
Item number seven, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Lone Star Tactical Building LLC for construction of a live fire training building for the Fire and Emergency Services Department.
Whereas the Fire and Emergency Services Departments need a, needs a live fire training building to advance its ability to provide training for its firefighters and promote fire protection in the community. And whereas after a diligent search, the department has identified Lone Star Tactical Buildings LLC as uniquely qualified to construct the facility to the department's specification. And whereas, the department has provided justification for concluding that Lone Star qualifies as a sole source vendor and as such, competitive bidding is not required under Arkansas law or the city's procurement regulations. And whereas, the mayor should be authorized to execute the attached construction contract with Lone Star to build a new live fire training building for the department. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, section one, that the City Council finds that Lone Star is a sole source vendor for construction of a live fire training building for the department and that competitive bidding to obtain a vendor for the work is not required under ACA fourteen fifty-eight one zero four of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas. Section two, that the mayor is authorized to execute the attached construction contract with Lone Star to perform the work and provide the necessary materials to construct a new live fire training building to the satisfaction of the department. Section three, the consideration specified for the contract shall be sourced from funds appropriated for this purpose in the department's twenty-twenty-five budget.
Move for adoption?
Second.
Been moved and seconded that resolution and item number seven be adopted. Any discussion?
Mayor, I'd like to be added as a sponsor.
Councilmember Holcomb would like to be added as a sponsor, Madam Clerk.
Whose name is that on there?
Councilmember Fails.
Are spells on there?
Oh, wasn't it?
That's not me.
Oh, that's me.
Oh, that's you. Oh, because I saw, I saw a Y and I said.
I definitely want to be a sponsor, that's why I was like, I don't remember whose name is on there.
Councilmember Brown would also like to be a sponsor. Councilmember Frazier would like to be a sponsor.
And everybody.
Everybody would like to.
I want to ask Chief a question about it.
Would you like to be a sponsor?
I'm, I'm, once I talk to Chief about it, I still got time to talk to him.
Okay, yeah, you do, I, I'm just, you said no and I'm just making sure. Hold on, I'm just responding to everyone I've heard so far and you can change later. You said no and I'm just clarifying now.
I didn't say no.
Well, you did, but you were saying it regarding to something else, but I'm, okay, so give me a second. Okay, so Madam Clerk, everyone except Councilmember Hayes, uh, Mays at this point would like to be added as a sponsor. Now, Councilmember Mays, you would like to pose a question to interim Chief Compton.
Yes.
Would you like for him to come before us?
Sure.
Council, uh, Chief Compton, can you please come before us? Thank you.
I got you. Just give me a minute.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I respect Chief Compton, he's, he's professional, like, like all of our city employees.
All of us are, it's given, let's go.
Explain this to me.
Good afternoon.
Yes, sir.
Explain Lone Star.
Lone Star? Okay, Lone Star is the, Lone Star is the company that we're asking to come in and build this building. Everyone can't build this building. This building must be built to the NFPA standards, which is the National Fire Protection Association, fourteen oh two. So we have to meet the requirements because you got to think about this, that our firefighters have to enter this building to train and we want them to be as safe as possible. If you have visited with the training center and seen the tower that we have now, it's at least, I've been here thirty-two years, so it's over, it was old when I got here. So just estimating is probably fifty to sixty years old. And matter of fact, we want to knock it down. They just had the last class, rope class, rope rescue class, and we want to knock it down. Matter of fact, today is Tuesday, we had talked about it today, but we didn't make that goal. But it will be coming down soon as this is passed.
How long, once we, once we pass it, how long it's gonna take to build it?
Okay, this building will be coming in, they got to manufacture this building in Texas. They're gonna transport this building to Pine Bluff, Arkansas. And it will be probably about ju, the first quarter of next year before we have it there. And it will be probably about juh, the first quarter of next year before we have it there on the premises. And we're also getting a deal because Little Rock is also getting the same building. North Little Rock already has it, they already have it at the Fire Academy.
Great job.
You good?
Councilmember, would you like to be added as a sponsor? Please add councilmember Mays as a sponsor.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with no further discussion, we'll go ahead and call the question for item number, resolution number seven. All those in agreement that, uh, for adoption indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item number eight, a resolution declaring Friday, June 6th, 2025, and June 6th of subsequent years as Go Orange National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas.
Whereas June 6th, 2025 has been named as a national day of remembrance on which Americans from all backgrounds will honor and remember those who have lost their lives to gun violence, as well as their loved ones who cope with their loss. And whereas the day is intended to support efforts aimed at preventing gun violence and to promote healing in the community, as well as recognizing individuals and organizations dedicated to reducing the occurrence of such incidents. And whereas in the community, in the local community, entities such as Group Violence Intervention, or GVI, the Pine Bluff Police Department, the Jefferson County Sheriff's Department, Sixth Division of Jefferson County Circuit Court of the 11th Judicial District West, along with other community groups, advocates and individuals have worked tirelessly to com- combat and reduce gun violence and build safer neighborhoods and a better city. And whereas the effort has, the effort to combat gun violence is a continuing one and each June 6th of subsequent years will be set aside and dedicated for the observance and remembrance by the city of Pine Bluff and to its residents. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas. Section one, that Friday, June 6th, 2025 is hereby officially declared Go Orange National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas. Section two, that on this date, in solidarity with those who have been victimized by gun violence, all residents of the city of Pine Bluff are encouraged to wear an item of orange clothing, a color worn by hunters to protect themselves, symbolizing the value of life and the community's shared commitment to ending gun violence. Section three, we, the mayor, members of the city council and other elected officials of the city of Pine Bluff do hereby commend and extend our thanks to the organizations named above and to all persons who are involved with and participate with these entities for their hard work and long hours in contribution and support of efforts to make the city safe for all.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that resolution number eight be adopted. Any discussion?
Yes.
Am you on as a sponsor?
Same here.
I got my orange, Dr. Crump.
Uh, councilmember Dinton. So, um, every, I, I think everyone would like to be added as a sponsor. Everyone else wants to be added as a sponsor.
Can we get Dr. Crump to say something?
Um, I, do you have any questions? Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move forward then, as we all support, uh, we all got, we all got our orange shirts. Okay, so, um, we'll go ahead and call the questions, question. All those who are supportive of, um, resolution, adopting resolution number eight indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item number 10, a resolution authorizing the acquisition of real property, 4500 Union Avenue.
Whereas in resolution number 4887 passed May 5th, 2025, the city council authorized Economic and Community Development Department in compliance with its obligations under the Home ARP grant from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to acquire housing units subject to the council approving each acquisition and the purchase price. And whereas Economic and Community Development Department has negotiated for the acquisition of real estate and with the street address of 4500 Union Avenue in Pine Bluff for the purchase price of $420,000 as part of its compliance with the HUD grant's terms and conditions. And whereas the acquisition and purchase price should be approved and the required documents executed to consummate the purchase. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas. Section one, the acquisition of the real estate with improvements with the street address of 4500 Union Avenue in Pine Bluff, Arkansas for the purchase price of $420,000 is approved subject to the terms and conditions set forth in the attached 14-page real estate contract. The contract with, with attached legal description of the property is approved and incorporated herein by reference. Section two, the mayor, city clerk and director of the Economic and Community Development Department are authorized to execute the said real estate contract and other necessary purchase documents and perform the tasks required to consummate the acquisition of the real estate in compliance with HUD regulations. Section three, the funds to pay for the purchase price for the real estate shall come from the HUD Home ARP grant funds. Section four, the real estate improvement shall be used consistent with the governing HUD rules and regulations.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that resolution number 10 be adopted. Any discussion? Councilmember Frazier?
One, I would like to say that I'm grateful for this opportunity for us to move forward, forward with this because homelessness is a problem in our city and so this gives us an opportunity to address that. And with us getting the 820,261 funds from the grant and then, uh, being able to ascertain the property for $420,000, which the property was appraised at 800, uh, 800,000 dollars, am I right? Six, $600,000, $600,000, that gives us $180 right off the bat on equity in that property. So I'm very excited about moving forward on the front of being able to help those that's homeless and also being able to do something that gives us a jumpstart even with equity.
Man, back to you. Any further discussion?
Yeah, so you said.
Councilmember Mays?
We have a grant, yes. Um, if you go to, uh, if you say one, two, three, four, the fifth page, right here, ultimate. You see here it says, uh, Economic and Community Development has been allocated 820,261 dollars. So we're good.
Any further discussion? We'll call the question, all those in agreement to adopt resolution number 10 indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item number 11, a joint resolution of the city councils of Texarkana, Texas, Texarkana, Arkansas, Whitehall, Arkansas and Pine Bluff, Arkansas to express unified support for the Red River Army Depot, RRAD, and the Pine Bluff Arsenal, PBA as critical components of national defense, regional security and economic susta- sustainability.
Whereas the Red River Army Depot located in northeast Texas near the Arkansas border plays a central role in national defense through its maintenance, repair and overhaul of tactical military vehicles and equipment for the U.S. Army, allied forces and international partners. And whereas the Pine Bluff Arsenal situated in Whitehall, Arkansas is a vital U.S. Army installation providing specialized manufacturing, storage and demilitarization of munitions, chemical defense equipment and other mission-critical materials. And, and whereas both RAD and PBA are financially efficient, high-performing installations that contribute to national security and readiness while generating significant economic impact for their surrounding communities. And whereas RAD supports over 3,200 direct jobs and generates an estimated 1.6 billion in annual economic activity with approximately 75% of employees residing in Texas and approximately, approximately 20% in Arkansas. And whereas the PBA employs approximately 820 personnel, making it one of the top employers in southeast Arkansas. And whereas RAD and the Pine Bluff Arsenal both collaborate with academic and private sector partners, including Texarkana College, Texas A&amp;M University, Texarkana and the Tex American, Americas Center to support workforce training, advanced manufacturing, logistics and innovation. And whereas our cities, Texarkana, Texas, Texarkana, Arkansas, Whitehall and Pine Bluff recognizes both installations as foundational to our shared economic vitality and national defense contribution. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Pine, uh, I'm sorry. Now therefore be it resolved by the city councils of Texarkana, Texas, Texarkana, Arkansas, Whitehall and Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that we, number one, that we jointly express our unified and unwavering support for the continued operation, modernization and full funding of the Red River Army Depot and the Pine Bluff Arsenal. Number two, that we urge the United States Congress and Department of Defense to prioritize both the Red River Army Depot and Pine Bluff Arsenal as indispensable to the success of the 2025 National Defense Strategy and the Defense Industrial Base. Number three, that we stand firmly against any efforts to reduce operations, diminish funding or otherwise jeopardize the missions of RAD or PBA. Number four, that we affirm, that we reaffirm our regional commitment to these facilities through cooperative in, in infrastructure investment, workforce development and intergovernmental collaboration. Number five, that copies of this resolution will be forwarded to Texas and Arkansas congressional delegations, the Secretary of Defense, the Secretary of the Army and the President of the United States.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that resolution number 11 be adopted. Any discussion?
I guess my question is, um, so our, our Pine Bluff Arsenal, it has come up, I guess as a potential, I guess defunding or they're closing it or?
Yes.
And so how, how far along is that process? I mean, are they at a point where they're going to close it or are they still making?
My understanding is that determination has not been made yet at all. This came from the army, I can't remember his rank, but, um, you know, it's, it's the highest level was delivering a report based, and the report listed, um, based on an assessment where there was some overlap and some recommendations about how those overlaps and waste could be addressed. But I can say that our delegation has been working feverishly to address this and has kept us in the loop. Um, uh, Mayor Foster and I have, um, been in pretty constant communication about this, um, for at least two to three weeks. And, um, and are just on the same page. I mean, there's not a whole lot we can do at this level, except what we're doing. Um, is staying in communication, um, with each other, with, um, officials on the federal level and then doing things like this, speaking with one voice in support, you know, for our respective installations.
Okay.
Does that, would everyone like to be added?
Yes, yes, of course.
All right, ca- uh, madam clerk, if you can add everyone. Okay, uh, with no further discussion, um, we'll call the question. And on, uh, resolution number 11, all those supportive of adoption of this resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam, uh, mayor.
Madam clerk?
Counsel, following you on to the next session, I do want to, uh, take a stance on number one in which councilmember Mays, uh, brought out the fact that, um, number one was not readable on page two, three and four, um, to the failure of the copier within the department. This was the best material that was produced to provide to each of you.
And I'll reiterate that it was still readable and that we have, um, and I'll just stop there. Okay, thank you, madam clerk. Um, next are announcements. Uh, we, the following announcements. Number one, on Tuesday, June 10th, 2025, multiple emergency response agencies will participate in a simulated pediatric adult mass casualty incident, MCI, exercise based on an active shooter scenario at Jack Robey Junior High School located at 4101 South Olive Street in Pine Bluff, Arkansas. This simulation will serve as a vital training opportunity for all involved and aims to improve real-world response readiness to large-scale emergencies. It also supports the continued development of collaborative response frameworks between local, regional and state agencies. While this is a controlled exercise, the public is advised that emergency vehicles and personnel will be active in the area. Please do not be alarmed by their presence, this is only a drill. Number two, and I want to, um, thank, um, chief Compton for putting this together. Number two, Pine Bluff Parks and Recreation will be hosting the Bloom Tennis Classic happening June 6th through 8th. Don't miss this exciting event, whether you're playing or cheering from the sidelines. To register or learn more, call Pine Bluff Parks and Recreation at 870-536-0920. Number three, join us on June 6th, 2025 from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Pine Bluff Convention Center for Go Orange Day, a community event to raise awareness about gun violence. The city of Pine Bluff and GVI encourage, encourages everyone to wear, um, orange and stand with us to promote a safer, gun-free Pine Bluff. Item number four, the Art Times 3 Campus will host a free public reception for the 38th Annual Small Works on Paper Exhibition from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Thursday, June 12th at the Arts and Science Center for Southeast Arkansas. Small Works on Paper showcases two-dimensional artwork, no larger than 18 by 24 inches and spotlights members of Arkansas, of the Arkansas Artist Registry. The exhibition will travel to nine venues throughout the state in this year-long show. The year's exhibition features 40 works by 35 artists. Alexia Lambs of Pine Bluff is among the artists chosen. And number five, June 14th is Family Fun Day at Art Times 3 and it is free to the public. Visitors will transform old clothing and other materials into new stylish items without using a sewing machine. This approach involves using glue, duct tape, hot glue or tying and knotting fabric to create unique and sustainable fashion pieces. Some t-shirts and old items will be available, but visitors are encouraged to bring their own. This is a DIY upscale fashion project. And so we will, uh, adjourn and then go right into public comments for non-agenda items. I will, uh, call the first person on the list for, um, residents, um, coming before us to speak on non-agenda items and that is, uh, uh, Director Chris Robinson. And he will, I guess, come next time. So next on the list is Foster Richardson. And then next on the list is Alisa Smith.
I'm here.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone.
And Alisa Smith is with, uh, is here to speak on street department and speed zones.
Hello, everyone.
And I'm sorry, one last thing, you got two minutes.
Okay, okay, all right. Uh, I'm going to be very quick. I am a public school teacher and I have, uh, practiced with my students. They have told me exactly what I'm supposed to do, so this is why I'm here. I live on the corner of 31st and Elm, so, um, Com- uh, city councilman Brown and also Ms. Dinton. I have had an issue with. I have had an issue with people running through and running and tearing up stuff in my yard and wrecking two vehicles. I am now at a damage level of $68,200. The BMW was torn up in December on the 14th. The young lady was drunk driving. The police came promptly, filled out all the information, talked about everything. However, she only had liability. I found out later that further down on 31st, she had hit three other cars. So that was $100,000 worth of damage done to State Farm, and they would not agree to pay. So naturally, I have insurance, so I had to file with my insurance, and that was taken care of. And I'm just blessed that she did not hit the gas main on the side of my house. So I let it go. Exactly two weeks later, there was a gentleman coming through that was not drunk, and he had the same issue. The issue is the pothole on the edge of the street on the other side. I have watched police cars dodge it. I have seen other citizens dodge it. I have seen the ambulances drive past it. And on April the 14th, they came through and hit two other vehicles that were in my yard. So I'm very upset about that. I went and found out from my students ways that I could speak to you to get something done. They have investigated with other schools, and they have found out that other students are willing to help. So this is what we have decided, that first of all, I can put up some kind of deterrents on my property, but I need to find out what I could be liable for, whether or not it would be a liability on my part or just a legality. I can put yard stakes, I can put boulders, I can put bushes, I can even dig a ditch or put some type of reflectors. So I need to find out from my city council people to whom I need to speak to to figure out which items I'm going to start with, because there will be more than one thing put up. Also, I need to say that the concrete replacement on my street department is, needs to be either a street divider, something needs to be done right there, because coming to this place today, one of the school buses also dodged that same pothole. And I heard everything about the $300,000 and all the things that have happened, but I want the city to be aware that as a citizen, I want something done to be in this area, whether it's the speeding or whatever. If there's a speed bump, I'm not just talking about it. This is my name, this is my number I will give to you. I want to try to find a way to help. So whatever I can do, if it's continually making videos of who's dodging it, I will be willing to do. But last but not least, I also noticed that in the time of getting here today, that the vehicles and the things that are passing by on this street, everyone on this street is speeding. There is not a speed sign on the street. I need to find out what is the speed limit on the street, because I'm not an obeying citizen of street signs every day, and I don't obey the speed limit, but I have to have something else, because if my insurance drops me, there will be other death conditions that have to take place. I have been unoccupied in both vehicles, and the third vehicle that hit was not even mine. They are in a parking space. My driveway is 28 feet by 19 and 3/4 feet. It holds four vehicles, and so far, three have been damaged, totaled all three. Thank you so much.
Ms. Smith.
Are there any questions or do I wait? I have pictures too. I brought it.
Okay. I want to talk with you after the meeting.
Okay.
If you can just wait around for me.
I will wait.
Okay.
Well, Ms. Smith, I'll say, stay on, on us, stay on, make it, make it happen.
I am.
If you drop it, this bunch gonna drop it.
I'm gonna make it happen.
No, we're not. And you not either.
No, I'm not. When they tell me something, I make it happen.
All right. And so nobody, thank you so much, Ms. Smith, for coming, and we look forward to visiting with you afterward.
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Fells.
I just wanted to let Ms. Smith know, let your students know they've prepared you well, and if anybody, they want a job with the City of Pine Bluff, they can talk to our HR director or whoever she is.
We'll take them.
Thank you so much. Benjamin Greenwich with the Black Development Chamber of Commerce. He is here to introduce himself to the council.
Good evening.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Benjamin Greenwich.
And I'm Kenya Greenwich.
The second. The second. I'm a proud resident of.
And Kenya, Kenya.
Proud resident of Pine Bluff City, which I love. I'm here to introduce myself as the Regional Director of the Black Community Development Chamber of Commerce of Arkansas. The Black Chamber, I'll get back to that in just a second, but just a brief bio. You know, I am deeply committed to serving and strengthening our Pine Bluff community. Over the years, I have had the privilege of contributing to our city's progress through leadership in law enforcement, substance abuse recovery, economic development, and civil advocacy. As the Founder-Director of the Before House, I have dedicated my, dedicated my efforts to addressing substance abuse, recovery, ensuring that individuals receive the support, resources, and guidance necessary to rebuild their lives. As Regional Director of the Black Community Development and Chamber of Commerce of Arkansas, I further contribute my assist, my assisting individuals and small businesses in accessing grants, jobs, training, and essential resources to stimulate economic progress in Pine Bluff. My current initiative, our organization is committed to providing structured recovery programs for individuals struggling with substance abuse, supporting small businesses with financial resources and opportunities for sustainable growth, advocating for civil rights and equitable opportunities as the second, well, I am a lifelong member of the NAACP, Second Vice President, Pine Bluff Branch, and engaging in the community through mentorship and leadership as a Prince Hall Mason, member of Lodge Busy B, Number 345, promoting values of service and brotherhood. I'm also a member of OES, Yellowstone Bright Light 145, where I serve as a Worthy Patron. I also work with Alex Gwynn, Drug Court, volunteering every Friday with him. Through these efforts, we have made measurable strides to helping individuals reintegrate into society, strengthen local businesses, and drive overall economic empowerment. However, actual lasting change requires collaboration and strategy partnerships. That's me. Proposal for partnership with the City of Pine Bluff. We recognize the challenges of our community faces, including the economic of substance abuse, economic disparities, and the need for stronger community resources to expand our impact. We seek to collaborate with the City of Pine Bluff on initiatives that can drive sustainable change, substance abuse, mental health, funding for small businesses, strengthening to civil rights, and Pine Bluff is a city rich in resilient strength and attack potential. By working together, we can transform challenges into opportunities, ensuring that every resident, business owner, and individual in need has the support necessary to thrive. We invite the mayor, city council to join us in this mission, forging a powerful partnership to make Pine Bluff a model for recovery, economic empowerment, and community advancement. We are eager to discuss ways in which we can collaborate to implement these initiatives and create a stronger, more prosperous Pine Bluff for all. And I also want to add that I am a recovering alcoholic. I've been sober since September 28th, 2015, and that's when we started. It's a miracle, believe me. But it's a reason, somebody helped me, so I'm helping somebody else. We are currently holding two AA meetings a day. We are members of Alcoholics Anonymous, and we hold two meetings a day at 5408 Middle One Road, which used to be a church, and we've been using it to hold AA meetings every day since, how, three years, four years, going on 40 years. So I believe that's, that's about it.
Thank you so much. Mr. Greenwich, would you be open for any questions?
I'm open for questions, yes.
Anyone have any questions, any comments?
Great job.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I sent every city council member an email.
Okay.
And the mayor's office about the Chamber of Commerce. And we're going to partner with Pine Bluff Black Chamber of Commerce and with the Chamber of Commerce here.
Awesome.
And UAPB, so.
All that.
Just introducing.
And the city.
I didn't hear you say that you are Pine Bluff finest.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I was hired at Pine Bluff Police Department in 1995, where I worked.
Started in 1995.
I started in 1995 until 2010, where a work injury forced me into retirement. And not to toot my own horn, but I was the first black traffic sergeant ever promoted to that position at the Pine Bluff Police Department.
Thank you all so much. And then Ms. Tanika Laflora is going to speak on the subject of police department.
I'm Tanika Laflora, and I'm here, I want to speak about an incident that happened with the Pine Bluff Police Department and the issues that I'm having going forward. But me and my niece was attacked on the 22nd of May at a Pine Bluff High Football Game. There was no security, no police officers. So I called 911. When the officer got there, only one officer responded, and it was like 15 people that had attacked us. One officer came, and immediately when he came, I went up to tell him what had happened. He told me that he had got a 911 call from the dispatch, and they said the lady with the red hair was the one that instigated everything. I was the lady with the red hair. So immediately at that point, I didn't really trust him, because for him to say something like this, these were kids that attacked me, ages like 14 to 17, and he immediately came up there to me. So he was very biased and very nonchalant. But he did take out his ink pen, he asked me my name, my phone number, asked my niece her name and phone number, and he didn't try to ask us who had attacked us. All the kids ran into the game, so they were still there. He didn't ask their name, he didn't ask any other witnesses anything about the incident, what had happened. So we were going to leave, but we couldn't leave because I was driving with my cell phone. One of the kids took my cell phone, so he proceeded and asked me, could I track it? So I had to call one of my family members to track the phone. At that point, the phone was in the stadium. So when we showed him it was in the stadium, he proceeds to tell my nephew to go in there and get it himself, whereas those were the people that had just jumped on us. They jumped on me and my niece and my nephew. Basically, my nephew just covered my niece. He probably saved her life, because it's videos everywhere going around. They were coming for blood for her. But he proceeded to try to send my nephew into the game to get the phone with no type of safety, no type of security, anything. So I proceeded to ask him, was he the only officer on duty? And he said he was the only one patrolling, and it would be someone there at the end of the game. So he kept us there with no protection. I could very well call my mother to come and pick me up, but he was saying that he was going to help me track my phone. Once the game ended, all the kids came out. I don't know these kids, so I don't know them from one, one person to the other, and he just had us standing there. And then once the game was over, he basically went to patrol, and I asked him, you know, well, what are you going to do? How are you going to handle this situation? And he pretty much just told me, oh, it'll be a report on, it'll be a report on Monday. And so he put all of us, all our lives in jeopardy still by leaving us there and not doing anything to help us. And my mom, she picked me up, so I came to get the report so that I could, you know, file, you know, charges or whatever about the incident. He wrote a five-line report, and basically on the five-line report, he put that my niece instigated the whole thing, and I ended up in it because I tried to break it up, and a teacher witnessed everything. He didn't put the teacher's name in the report, and he didn't put any of the victims' names in the report, because he didn't even attempt to ask me, was I okay or anything? The next day, my head was still hurt, my head was hurting, I had real bad nausea and vomiting, and I ended up in the emergency room, and I suffered a concussion from this. And he didn't try to ask us that we have any injuries or anything. And after that, I tried to press charges, and by me doing that, I went up to the city clerk's office or whatever to do that, but none of the information that they would need was even put in the report. He didn't put any of the information in the report. And so the lady was telling me that I had to have the, the kid's name, their phone number, their addresses, whereas I wouldn't have any of that information to even file the report. So I did reach out to, I think it's GY Compton, and which he was very assertive and, you know, giving me information, everything that I need to do, and helping me to try to get the report updated and everything. He passed the information on, and so I spoke with him today, and I went back to go get the report. The report has not been updated, nothing has been done to the report or anything. So this right here is just prolonging, prolonging, prolonging. And right now, my doctor has me off work, because I, I don't live in Pine Bluff, but I grew up in Pine Bluff. I went to Pine Bluff High School, but my parents, they live in, they live in, they live here, and my niece is always with my parents, and I'm very afraid that if I had not been with her, she would have been my mom, and that same situation would have happened. And I just feel like it's just something needs to be done to help, you know, like I did hear y'all discussing about it being a shortage, which I understand it may be, you know, a shortage with the people on foot, but until the people on foot is covered, the people that's in the head, that's on top, need to come out and put their boots to the ground and come take care of the city of Pine Bluff. Thank you.
Ms. Laflora, would you be willing to take any questions if there are any? Does anyone have any questions?
Did you get the officer's name?
His name is Goodwin, Officer Goodwin.
Did you talk to the chief about it?
I, I went to talk to the chief, and basically, they wouldn't let me talk to the chief. I went the first day that, after it happened, because it happened on, on Thursday, and so when I went Friday evening, basically, they were saying that everybody was gone due to the holidays. So on Thursday, I proceeded to go up there to try to talk to the chief, and everybody at their front window, they were just like so opposed, I don't know, all you need to do is get this report, you got to get the report and go upstairs and file it. But the thing about it is, with this report, it was absolutely nothing that I could even do with the report. And luckily, I asked questions, because if I had just been another citizen coming in, and they went up there, they would have just did the little paperwork, and it would have just got set to the side. But I asked questions about, you know, all this stuff on here, and because I, this happened to me before, and I never heard anything from them. And the lady said, if all the, they say they don't do no investigation, that that's on the police department side to do investigation, and investigation information should be on this police report. And once I received that, then I go upstairs and I can file charges. But until then, it's nothing me as a citizen or anything can do without the proper information being on this police report.
So did you try to do a follow-up today?
Yes, I did do, I did a follow-up today.
And they?
And it has not been corrected.
Mr. Halle, can you kind of address that with her?
And, and as he, maybe if, if he can come, but I just wanted to clarify too, that I did receive a copy, I was copied on the complaint that was emailed, and Ms. Laflora did come by my office, and I shared that Chief Warrior was out of town, number one, and number two, that I had had a couple of conversations, and upon her return, had planned to take a look at the body cam and have a conversation with her about it, because I'm sure she got the complaint, but had to, she left to attend a conference. Okay.
But can he kind of give her some details on what to do, how to follow up with that?
Yes, yes, oh, yeah. I thought he was on his way up.
There's a process that complaints come through. From my understanding, I believe this young lady did file a complaint in our. From my understanding, I believe this young lady did file a complaint in our OPS office. Now, when that complaint comes in, uh, there's a process that it starts from the bottom, from the supervisors, and it works its way up. It is unfair for the administrator to go ahead and look at and, and make an opinion on a complaint when somebody comes in. This is why we ask for our citizens to schedule, number one, a, um, sit down or meet down with us. Whatever day you probably came up there, I'm not for sure it was, we can, we are continually in meetings. The administration is meeting with our supervisors, meeting with our command staff. And if someone just come up there and they're not scheduled to come up there, we just don't stop what we're doing to go and tend to what, whatever that citizen may want. We would get to them, but you gotta allow us to just to have a minute just to, number one, review everything. I don't know what all, uh, uh, this entails, but when we get a chance to review the, the complaint, there's so much we gotta look at. We'll look at the report, we'll look at the body camera footage, we'll look at the video footage, I think that you said, that's out there. But give us an opportunity to look at it and then make our decision. If the officer's done something wrong, of course, there's a, um, progressive discipline, um, process that we do, we do, uh, do. But you just gotta be patient with us, ma'am, everything is not gonna happen overnight. And I will say this, you said that your report has not been updated. It's a good chance that the report is in the system, it just has not been approved by a supervisor.
The chief, I spoke with the chief today and said nothing has been done.
And, and that, that's, that's completely fine, ma'am. But, uh, if you came up there today and then you gave that information-
I didn't give him any information, he gave him the information last Wednesday. And what I'm here today is not about the complaint that I make to the officer. This is about the situation of the incident, more so. The complaint, that's a separate entity. So I know that there's a process and that will take time, but I'm talking about for me to even handle what needed to be done about me being attacked.
Yes, ma'am. All I'm saying is just allow us, let us go through the process. Let us be able to view ev- all the facts before we make and render a decision. I cannot make a decision on something that I don't have all the facts on me or Chief Warrior. So when that complaint comes up-
Yeah, but that's what I'm not here about, the complaint.
Okay. You're here because of the way you were treated by the officer.
Yes, but not, but more so, I'm more so here about me trying to handle getting things taken care of as far as me pressing charges and everything. That's what he, how he handled me at the place is totally separate.
Yeah. Okay. So what you're still saying, you're complaining still about the officer, the way he handled you?
No, no, this, I, I, I handled that, I went over there and talked to them.
Okay.
And they're gonna get back with me on that. When I came over here, it was more so about me, this, this police report, these three lines that he put on, that he put on here. So I can't go forward with what I need to handle and what I need to take care of.
That can be corrected, ma'am. If you come, if you come to the police department tomorrow, you can specifically ask for me, Assistant Chief Hadley, you'll go down to the TRU office. What they'll do, they'll do what they call a supplement report to add all the other stuff on there, whatever. Um, the, the suspect, the victim and all that, as long as somebody had that.
Who did you get that information to?
The council said it was a group related incident. We brought me here to the table and talked to them and gave their names and I was-
I'm sorry, um, Reverend Crumpton, can you please come on and come up here? Thank you.
Yes, the information was collected, they were invited because it was a group involvement with a lot of children jumping on the young lady. So we took the information because, uh, the report did not have names. And so we did get some names and we did, uh, hand them over. Uh, Lieutenant Jose is not here, but they have the information. I was in, under the impression, cause I told her today that she can go over there cause I was told they had updated the information. The problem I have is that I got to be fair. And they got to take care of that business because it's not fair to her. And that's what I'm all about, law enforcement, social workers, and the community. So I stand up on behalf of, when the information is passed, you got to respond. Now, what it's doing is putting Assistant Chief Hadley on the spot for something that he said starts at the bottom. If you got a sorry worker at the bottom, you're not gonna do nothing.
Really talk, Bill. So, so a question. Was this a scrimmage game or a gang game?
It's just, uh-
Excuse me?
The business part got to be taken care of.
I got you. What, what kinda game was it, scrimmage?
It was a, a red and white game that Pine Bluff had.
We're talking about a red and white game? All this going on at the red and white game? A scrimmage game?
Let, let me address that real quick, uh, cause I heard her say something about she said it wasn't not protected by police officers.
No, security either. I know that that's not our responsibility.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm glad you, you recognize that. That is not our responsibility, that will be on the school. It's up to them to, to hire either off-duty police officers or their security team. I hate that that incident happened, but I will try to get this addressed with her, uh, tomorrow. I will give her a call tomorrow, myself, to make sure that we try to get this, uh, uh, corrected. And then, um, the other things that she was saying, the complaint, that'll come up the process and we'll just find out if there was any wrongdoing on our end. I will make sure that this will get addressed, uh, dealing with this report issue tomorrow. Set an appointment with her as to the call and have her to come in. Yes, ma'am, that's what I, I'll do. Okay.
From here on out, any game at Pine Bluff High, some kinda security should be there. But I think the schools have-
If there was no security, school security or anything at the game.
Did the officer note that in his report?
The officer, the officer wrote, this is what he wrote in his report. And basically, he said that my niece instigated fifteen students. And after she couldn't handle the fifteen, I tried to break it up. Is what he said the teacher told him, that's what's on this report.
He said that's what somebody else said.
Uh, yeah, that's what he said.
Cause he didn't observe, he got there.
The teacher said that.
He got there later.
Yeah, he got there later and then she was trying to fight fifteen people. And then I got in to try to break it up and that's how I got jumped on. But we were, and we were attacked, they were waiting on us when we came out the game and they attacked us. And he didn't ask any questions. He didn't ask, he, he didn't ask me any questions, cause like I say, the first thing he told me, in which if he had his body cam on, you would see it. He said that the lady, he was told that it was a nine-one-one call from the dispatch, that a lady with red hair instigated the whole thing and pointed to me that, cause I had red hair that day.
You know, there should be some more footage, shouldn't there? Camera footage?
Not from the officer, but that, I believe all of that happened before the officer even arrived, so.
Well, yeah, it's plenty of videos, yeah, it's several videos, well, I didn't, uh, they're out on the internet. But it, they're clear as day, it's, they're very clear, they're very good videos.
Thank you so much, Ms. Laflora, and thank you both, Chief Hadley-
Yes, ma'am.
And Reverend Crumpton, um, for giving us some insight into this. And I know that I assured Ms. Laflora that, um, I had received the complaint as well and will be in communication with Chief upon her return. And we will keep the council updated on this particular issue.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you all.
All right. With nothing else, I will, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn. It's been moved in second to, that we'll adjourn with no objection. We are adjourned. Oh, yes. We were already adjourned.